Work a little quicker than we think.
I hope so.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yama zoning Board of Appeals. Today's date is December 12th, 2024. We have six matters on our agenda tonight. The first matter is petition 5063, The Harbor Club. Doing business tugboats restaurant. The property is located in a R25 zoning district. They are here for a one-year review per condition five of a decision number 5063 dated February 5th, 2024, allowing entertainment slash live music at the restaurant. Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Chairman?
Well, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I'm Stephen Pizzuti. I represent The Harbor Club, Inc. Mr. Kirk, or to my left, Ted Zambellis, to my...
Gentlemen.
Say like seven o'clock. First of all, let me say it's amazing that a whole year went by. It seems like it was just yesterday. And all summer long, they operated and they actually did a good job. I think you have a couple of letters in there.
You do?
Then there were no complaints to the, to the police department, which was your primary concern last year. You wanted us to report any reports for noise or whatever, because that's really what the petition was.
We actually had a couple that we had in our file, but it's not really many and certainly not out of the ordinary for running a busy restaurant and what goes on there in that particular place. Also may have been from the other businesses that runs on the place as well, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think that's pretty much it. There's really not much else to say other than they've operated, they've respected their neighbors. I think that they've done a good job, basically with the parking, with the, with the traffic. There's not much more that they could do at this point to really make it as accommodating for the, for the butters. And we went through this all last year in exhaust, you know, as much as we possibly could.
Yep. Oh, no, no.
So.
Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I don't think so.
I'm going to go to the board with any questions. Anybody have any questions? John, do you have any questions?
I do, just the... The, the conditions we applied in the last petition, any issues with any of them? Did they restrict your...
We did not really have any problem adhering to those restrictions this past year.
Okay, so you wouldn't be averse to keeping those in place and moving forward?
I don't think that there'd be any issue with that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Barbara, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, Jay?
Just a quick one.
Go ahead.
Just a quick estimate, I mean, how, I know it was going to be infrequent. You talked about use, about how many times did you actually have music and how often and type of thing?
First of all, there's, there's music all the time with the, with the, the, from TVs and Sonos.
I meant more than...
You're talking about live entertainment? It was infrequent, infrequently. I think if there was one thing that was inconvenient.
Six stamps.
It was in, what was inconvenient was upstairs. Remember how they limited it with no amplification up there? That was, that if there could be any maybe yielding on the conditions, it would be upstairs.
That's the single person upstairs?
Yeah, that was a little inconvenient, not being able to have any amplification up there. I would ask if it's possible to be able to utilize amplification upstairs.
Yes, the types of events, you talked about possible weddings or just general events. What kind, what kind of events?
We've had an entertainer up there where he tries to tell jokes and get everybody laughing and that sort of thing.
No, I mean, in general, too. I mean, it's, did you have, have you been running weddings now? You talked about weddings or parties.
That's, that's what we do. Wedding weddings.
Okay. Okay. That's all. Okay, that's all I had, just wondered what kind and how often. Thanks.
Dick, do you have any questions?
No, not really, I'm comfortable with the, with the circumstances.
Okay, we do have two letters of support. Basically, they read the same way. One is from Maureen Ryan of 8 Newbury Street. The other one is from Ann Simeon of 138 Bayview Street. Both of them are appreciative of the democratic process. They attended the December 23 hearing meeting. A year later, that they can say that I support these specific limitations, want to make sure they continue. Honestly, we could on occasion hear music from tugboats during the summer, but it was within reason and manageable. It was not a daily situation and not an ongoing disruptive issue. They were correct the way they, to allow the business to offer some live music for patrons and to protect the quality of life, the surrounding neighborhood and citizens. Thank you for your consideration. That's Maureen Ryan. Essentially, we have the same thing from the other lady. I think those are the only two letters we have in our packets. Answer your question about the amplified music upstairs. I think you'd have to file a petition to modify that special permit. This is here really just for a review of the
It's fine.
conditions that we have. If sometime you want to come back in the future and talk about that, we'd be more than happy to.
It's fine.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Is anyone here on this petition? Seeing none. Anybody online for this petition?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied that the conditions have been met?
Do you need to make a motion?
No, we just make a motion, just to...
Make a motion to, to approve the review and no need to have additional ones?
No. Have a second to that?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none. We're all set.
Much.
Thank you for coming by and best of luck.
Quick and easy.
Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you. Nice seeing you.
The next matter is petition 5133. Rose Vannery, property located at 17 Allison Lane, West Jarmouth, Mass. It's in an R25 zoning district.
Sit down for this one.
Oh, I see, okay. This is a continued hearing.
Yes.
Hi, how are you? From 9/26/24 and 10/24/24. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 subsection 2 and/or a variance from section 203.5 for side and rear setback relief to build a 16 by 20 shed. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified plot plan less than two years old. Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, I should correct that I messed up the measurements of that shed.
Okay.
Which, by the way, is already built.
Yeah, we know that, yeah.
I'm being honest.
No, no, we've been by to see it.
It's an eight by twenty. I talked to Ed Stone a number of times in November. We went back and forth, I have it on my phone. And he was, he thought that what he had done at 18, which is where I live, I don't live at 17. I live at 18. My daughter and her kids are 17. So we went back and forth and I thought, oh, great, this is good, I'm going to be able to do this. And then I said, no, no, you're, no, no, you came to 18 when we did septic. And he said, oh, I can't, I couldn't get there to look at it if I tried, no less do a survey. I was like, okay, so now I'm stuck. I called, I have a friend who's a manager in one of the Cumberland Farms and her husband, John, I don't even know their last name. He is a surveying fella and she was going to give him the message whether Karen did or not. I don't know, I don't, I didn't hear from him. So I've been trying to get this plot plan so that we can just... There it is, and I did a little rosy thing there.
Well, that's not going to be, we talked about it.
Mom, that is not going to cut it.
Yeah.
I tried. The other thing that I have not done, which I thought I did, was fill out this express shed permit. I have not done this yet.
Okay.
My grandson said, Nan, if it's a big problem, I'll just take off what I have to take off of it and make it to size. He said, I'm, I'm sorry I'm doing this to you. And I'm saying, well, look, I was so happy you were building it because you're going to get your stuff put away and I'm going to be excited and across the street. So that's where we are. It's still there. Can't somebody come take a look? Help me measure it?
Well, there's a couple of things here. First of all, we need to know where it is and it's larger. So I'm not sure, what size do you say this is?
It is an eight by twenty.
Okay, well, you're over the 150 square feet limit, so you'd have to comply with the actual setbacks. It's in the rear of the property, correct?
The rear, yes, it is, it's...
That'd mean you'd need to be at least 20 feet off.
Oh, it would, it would be 20.
It would need to be that unless you were in here seeking a variance.
Well, that's what I thought we were...
Well, I know, but we, we asked you for a certified plot plan, doesn't sound like you have one.
No. Sorry.
So you could do, you could do a couple of things here. We could take a vote and I don't think you're going to win, okay? That would prevent you from coming back for two years. You could ask us to allow you to withdraw it without prejudice, which would allow you to get a certified plot plan and come back. Might not stop you from an enforcement action by the town, but that's their department and not ours. Or your grandson could cut off what he said from the shed, bring it down to under 150 and I think it's six feet you'd have to be off then.
Yeah, it's five and a half from the rear and it's seven and a half from the sideline.
We wouldn't know that, we've been over this three times now. We're looking for a certified plot plan, so what's your pleasure?
I don't know.
Well...
You suggest I postpone it for two years?
Well, I don't, I don't know that, I, I don't know how the others feel on the board, but my vote would be no and you need four. So you need all four of us, so even if they all voted yes, you still wouldn't win. So I think what you may want to consider doing is asking us to allow you to withdraw it without prejudice and then you could go back and maybe get a surveyor and then refile and come back and see us again.
Or take it down.
Or that's your, that's your other option.
Take it, take it, take down what's there and...
Well, at least reduce it enough to...
To come to the six feet or...
So you're under the 150 and then you'd only have to be six feet off your setbacks.
Okay.
So do you want to withdraw your...
Without prejudice.
Okay. Anyone prepared to make a motion to allow her to withdraw the matter without prejudice?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And that would be withdrawing both forms of relief, your request for a special permit and a variance. Did you ask for both? I only see a, I, I see both forms of relief, so that would be on both forms of relief, the special permit and the variance, even though you really just need a variance on that, what you're asking us for. If you came back again, it may be special permit.
Right measurements in the right position and so on and so forth. Yay.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
All right, Merry Christmas, thank you very much. You have a nice night. The next matter we have is petition number 5147. Christopher Wilson, property located at 16 Denver Drive, West Jarmouth, Mass. It's in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a variance from... The applicant seeks a variance from section 401.1.1 to occupy camping equipment for year round use. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement for a certified site slash plot plan less than two years old. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you?
Good, could you identify yourself for the record?
Yep, my name's Chris Wilson.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. I have a question for you.
Definitely.
Before we get started here. I know there's a lot going on with this property, okay? This is the first time it's been before us. And there's an action in the court against a Brian Wilson. Who's Brian Wilson?
My uncle.
You're Brian Wilson, okay. And you're the owner of the property, sir?
Co-owner.
Co-owner. And you're Christopher Wilson?
Yes.
Are you an owner of the property?
No.
Well, I think the problem that we have going forward is I don't think you have standing to ask for relief. I think he does, but...
About him? I am a co-owner.
Well, I, I understand that, but I don't have that on the petition. I only have his name. If either one of your names was on there, we could address it.
Okay.
But unfortunately, we don't, so I, I don't think we can go forward with this tonight.
How is that, then what do we do? How does that work, what do we do?
Well, this matter would be dismissed for lack of standing.
Okay.
You're not a proper party and interest to ask for relief.
I see.
Only the owners can. Now, if they want to refile and come back in again, we'd certainly be happy to hear that.
Okay.
Okay?
Awesome, yeah.
You can't ask for relief as a tenant?
No.
May I speak?
Well, since you're an owner briefly, but I'm, I won't hear from anyone else, but yes, Mr. Wilson, go ahead. And you can come to the microphone or come on up to the table.
Is multiple violations on the property?
Well, we're not here to address any violations, okay? The only thing we're, we're address is the request for relief. The violations would be in the building department for any zoning violations, any...
And the health department also.
Well, the health department would be, the health department would deal with that. We only deal with the zoning. And like I said, here, he doesn't have standing to go forward.
Okay.
So I think what we're going to do tonight is we're going to dismiss this petition for lack of standing of the petitioner. If an owner, one of the owners or both of the owners want to come back seeking relief for what is prayed for in this petition, we'd be more than happy to hear from it then. Okay?
Awesome.
All right, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, she wants a stamp back?
We, we received it, so...
Wait, that one, how come I don't get the stamp over here? I get the cupcakes with no stamp? Oh, I had this one.
I just brought it over.
Oh, 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 thank you.
Make sure we don't leave.
Oh, I, there you go. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. You might want to keep your copy.
Is this stuff in here? While we're waiting. So the record there is... We don't bother, that's... We'll just wait for everybody to leave. This one is... The other two guys owned it. Continued. The next matter on our petition is petition number 5148. Sandala Customs LLC, property location at 90 C View Ave., Unit 3C, South Jarmouth. It's in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2 to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use to add a 19 by 3 by 11, 11 screened-in porch to the back of the unit. Is there anyone here on that matter tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive a letter this morning requesting a continuance to January 9th, if that's possible.
How many do we have on January 9th?
We do have five, but it's possible another one might also request a continuance at that one, so it might be...
What do we have after that?
January 23rd also has five and then after that it'll be February 13th.
Is somebody here tonight to sign an extension?
They, they are not, but we could, we asked them to sign an extension.
When is the 65 days up?
I don't, I don't know if I have now. Make that a condition that...
It was 12, 12/12 is the date it was filed. Yeah, that, was that the, was that the date that it was filed? I don't know.
It's clocked in, yes.
12/12? That's what it says.
That's the date of the hearing. There should be clocked in from the town clerk, right at the top of the application, Mr. Frey, pray.
Oh, yeah. October 15th. October 15th? Yeah. That's, um, so that, yeah, it'll be beyond, anything's beyond 65 then. We have five on right now for both January meetings?
Do, and there is potential for one of those petitions to request a continuance, so that might open up a slot.
Oh. All right, I'll tell you what, why don't we continue them over to the, the first one?
January 9th.
The January 9th. On the condition that they come in and sign an extension agreement. If they don't, the matter is dismissed.
Okay. We'll make that motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion to that, apparently, so make a motion to...
Motion to, motion to continue to January 9th, is it?
2025.
2025. On the condition that they come in and sign an extension, otherwise it'll be dismissed.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Start it.
Any discussion?
Hearing none.
All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing none, that carries on. Okay, yeah, just, I don't, something. Okay, moving right along. Yeah, I'll get you all home before the ballgame starts.
Time for cooking, time for cupcakes.
How do you know I'm going to call yours? Probably, yeah, which one? Come on up, have a seat. Okay. Next is petition 5149, Capewide Construction. Property, Inc., property is located at 75 Massachusetts Ave., West Jarmouth, Mass. It's in an R25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2.2 and/or a variance from 203.5 for side setback relief to increase the height of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling in the required setbacks. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Roger Brooks from... Capewide Construction here, should we shut one of these off?
Sure, shut it when everyone you want to.
Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction here with the owner Scott McKean at 75 Massachusetts Avenue. As you said, we're seeking a special permit or a variance if you feel that's appropriate. Essentially, we want to lift the house up. It's an existing non-conforming structure. We want to raise it to comply with FEMA, get it out of the flood zone. We're going to be adding a front porch because we need some more steps. We've got some additional area. And we've averaged the setbacks of the two adjacent properties. That calculation's on the plan.
Okay. The, did you say that you setback average, did you setback average the?
The porch? Right, that allowed us to get the porch.
Put the porch in at 23 versus 30?
Correct.
Okay.
And will be plus or minus one step depending on exactly where the grade is.
Okay.
The owner has already removed the shed from on top of the septic system. We had actually applied for a building permit. It's had already gone through conservation once and that order of conditions had expired. We're going back through conservation again and approved again with this plan. At this time, we just elevated, you know, special permit to elevate for a house in the front.
Okay, question, are you, is the main house staying within the existing footprint?
Yes, it's literally moving up other than the proposed porch on the front and the proposed porch down at the back.
And they have to be at a minimum four feet out from the front, I think, by code, don't they?
We need a minimum platform, but because we're going up higher.
You need more because of this, okay?
Get down.
All right, and so you're, you're finished at 23.1 and you're setback averaging the houses on either side of you. I see the house to your left right here. That actually looks like it's right in line with your proposed porch. Well, they say 27, but you probably couldn't tell the difference. Oh, that, your steps come a little further. Your porch looks like it's just about there, okay. So you got a couple of steps that are coming out to make it 23.
That's maximum steps that we...
Building next door is only 13? What's that? This one's only 13?
Yeah, the house next door is very close to the road.
They're very close to the road, if you've been over there, that it, it's, it's pretty tight. I don't think there's going to be any plans to expand Mass Ave over there, widen it, but it's plenty wide right now. I question on the septic, have you been to board of health and everything as far as the septic?
Health had offered some comments when we applied for a building permit. Their own major comment was get the shed off of the septic tank and it's been done.
The, the dwelling in the back?
Is that the shed?
Is that? I, I, I can't tell you how long I've been over in that area over there and I've never even noticed that house behind. I've driven by this house a million times.
Late 40s, early 50s, pre, both pre-date.
Zoning, yeah, okay.
You own them both?
Okay. Are they both on the same deed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so...
Where was the shed on the property just?
It was, you can see it right in the corner right here.
Okay, I see, yeah, I see, I see what you're talking about. Where the proposed deck is going to be now?
Right.
Is it going to remain a two-bedroom?
Yes.
Okay. So really just building a new house, put it up in the air a little bit, getting near FEMA requirements?
Not knocking down the house, we're going to crib it up.
Just lifting it up, yeah.
It's on a rip. Right now, it's failing in places, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're looking at it, yeah. It looks like it needs a little work over there.
Not adding a second floor or anything like that or finishing the second, so it's just height.
Yes.
Okay, why don't we go to the board for some questions? Is that all you want to say right now? Okay. Jay, any questions for the petitioner?
I don't have them, no.
Dick?
Yeah, it would seem to me that the porch in front, which is a structure, would appear to be whatever, 27 feet or something from the street, 26, 27. And which would mean you need relief on that if you wanted that porch within the front setback. Because on the application, you're only asking for to increase the height of a pre-existing single-family dwelling in the required setbacks, so...
203.3 is by right.
Add the porch?
No, not to add the porch, but to average the setbacks.
Oh, okay.
Setback, yeah.
Okay, averaging setbacks, bringing you, okay, I get it. Yeah, the budding building's pretty close.
And they built, they built... Do we still have the pictures in the file?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, that covers that question I have and the stairway in the back. I mean, that side there is not coming any closer than what's there apparently with the deck or anything. And two, it seems to think it's supposed to tend one in the front. So you're a little further back than what's existing in the existing structure, I guess. Septic tank apparently goes under that stairway a little bit.
Under that, we'll have sonotubes around it.
All right. All right, I guess I got nothing else.
Just to confirm, so the new height will be roughly 23 feet, is that right?
The new setback?
I'm going to look it up.
Oh, the new height, the height of the...
New height will be at elevation.
The new height will be to the ridge from average existing grade is 21 foot six and a half.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
21 foot six and a half, it's on the front elevation on sheet A2.
Okay, yeah, so you're well under anyway, so that's fine, thank you.
Barbara?
No questions?
No questions.
Okay, so you're...
I have one question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Are you, you're going to raise it up and it's going to be a firm cement foundation, is that what it is?
Concrete foundation.
Concrete, and are you going to put anything on the side to the concrete to kind of dress it up at all or?
I was, had not been discussed at this point.
I'd like at some point to have a fake stone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to look at regular cement, so in the future, I'd probably put the fake stone on the side.
Look at that, or what is it we recommend in the past?
Well, what we have done generally in this neighborhood is require that that be covered with something. A lot of people are going with the horizontal ship lap with the nickel board there at the white, you've seen that? Or they go with a vertical, a natural, something like that. If you want to do something with a, some type of... If you want to do something with a, uh, some type of a stone veneer, we're fine with that. But we, uh, we generally require that that's covered, so you...
There is a requirement in the bylaw for that?
As a condition, the board.
Yeah, my neighbor had it done last, well, probably ten years ago. She just recently put stone on his cement, but it was cement up until a couple of years ago. Is that...
Well, this is a condition that we put on the board because we have to look at this in terms of is this gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and having a lot of exposed, aesthetically, we try to make it look nice.
Same page, and I want my house to look, yeah, so.
We can come up with this.
Wait, whatever you, whatever you decide, that's fine with us. We just want you to...
Is there an amount of concrete that, like, is there something we can go look at, or is it just we gotta cover it?
When you say go look at?
Well, like, is there, uh, a definition somewhere that we can read, or it will be?
Just telling you that all, all exposed concrete's gotta be covered.
All four sides?
Yeah.
Is that, I'm just trying to learn, is that so? Have any new house not in a flood zone or only when it's been elevated?
Well, when you're, when you're elevating it up, generally we require it, and if you look around the neighborhood, that what's been done.
I've done other work in the neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, so.
So we only really, we, we require that generally as a condition just to protect everybody and keep everything looking nice up there. I mean, you're in a very expensive neighborhood down there. I mean...
I'm looking to fix my house.
No, and when you finish this, this is gonna be a very expensive home. Even though it's not a big home, it's gonna be expensive. You're right down there on the water.
Valuable.
Valuable.
Paradise.
Yep.
There you go.
Had ninety-six, nine, eleven.
We might make you put a few more bucks in it, but you'll get that back. Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add, gentlemen? Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody here on this petition that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition? So please come to the microphone. Seeing none. If you have nothing left, we'll close it for board discussion and, uh, we'll, we'll close it to the public hearing and begin board discussion. Is anybody prepared to begin a discussion or make a motion?
I'm, I'm fine with what they want to do. I don't think it's a big, a problem at all, but I do think we need to get the condition in there that we always use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dick, what do you think?
I'm good. I don't have anything.
John?
Yeah, same here.
Barbara?
I agree.
Yes, um, I, you know, again, um, it's a reasonable request. We have everybody that's coming down in the flood zone. You gotta raise that up for FEMA standards. And, uh, unfortunately, you gotta get up in the air, so we try to make the neighborhoods look as good as possible, and we think this is the way to do it. And I think your request is reasonable. I don't think that you're gonna be more substantially detrimental than what's there now, so I do think you meet the criteria for special permit. I don't think you'd need a variance, so we will ask you in a few minutes to withdraw that request. So, having said that, um, anybody prepared to make a motion?
Um, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the special permit as presented in the, in the plans as well as with a condition that the siding be put on the cement foundation.
Okay, so we're gonna cover the foundation with some type of a siding or veneer?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Now, you also asked for variance relief. You don't need it. Um, so what we need to do is we have to address that. If you walked out of here and we didn't do anything, sixty-five days from whenever you filed that, uh, petition, you'd automatically be granted a constructive approval. I know. So what we're gonna ask you to do, you, you don't need that relief. You didn't grant it a special permit, so we would like you to ask to withdraw that without prejudice, which means if you have a need of variance, you can come back.
We hereby withdraw without prejudice our request for a variance.
Is there a motion to allow the petitioner to withdraw the request for variance without prejudice?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, gentlemen, uh, once the decision is written, it'll be clocked with the town clerk. Twenty days must elapse. That's a technical appeal period. I don't think anybody's gonna appeal us. After, uh, that period is, uh, over with, you come in and see Dolores. She'll give you your special permit. You need to go over and register, uh, record it at the Registry of Deeds and bring a copy back for our file. Any questions? Okay, good luck with your project.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. All right, the next matter on our petition is petition number five, one, five, zero, Sinorama. Property's located at twelve White's Path in South Yarmouth. Then a B one A P D in Zone two. The applicant seeks a special permit for a three oh three point one three and/or variance from three oh three point five, point five subsection three to allow a second attached sign. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Robert Schwartz, the owner of Sinorama.
Okay. And so, just so I understand what you want to do, I know where you're at. Do you have this sign in place right now, or is this gonna be a new sign, this one right here? That's the Sinorama sign.
That sign is in place. There, there are two units that I, that I lease. Uh, the second unit has a sign that's been up there for twenty-five years. It looked pretty bad.
Okay, so the one that's over to the right, you wanna just replace that one?
Replace it, and I gave a copy of, um, my proposal of what I would like to put in place, just a list of our services.
Okay, okay, all right. All right. If that's all, I'm gonna go to the board for any questions they might have. Barbara, do you have any questions?
So it's gonna be the same size essentially as the other one?
Yeah, they're light boxes. The whole strip has the same size light boxes, so it's, it'll stay within the same.
Same, okay. All right. That's all.
John?
In, what's that, seventy-two by twenty-four? Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Jay?
So, so you have two signs today, cause you have two units, is that why?
Correct.
And this one is already, I drove by today. This one's already here, the Sinorama sign?
Yeah, that one is already, I had, I had replaced it, um, a few months ago. Received a permit for that.
Yep.
Need a special permit for the second sign.
So really what you want to do is change the other sign to provide services?
Just list our services.
Same size as the old sign?
Same size, same, uh, same box. No changes to that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not sure if we usually have services listed, but... All set.
Okay, Dick?
So you're here for the fact that it's one ownership and you're trying to get two signs, or you're, or the sign is oversized for the unit that's there now?
No, the each, I rent, um, they're connected now, but I had, I leased two separate units, um, six and seven in that strip.
Right.
Both of those have light boxes. The first light box is, the first light box is Sinorama.
Right.
The second light box has some, I don't even know what it is. It was put up twenty-five years ago at some sort of a painting or something. So it serves of no purpose, uh, and what I wanted to do, it's a backlit sign. It's just a list of our services.
The sign that's there now on the right end unit, uh, isn't Sinorama at all, right?
No, it's not, okay.
So you're combining two units to make one, um...
Business?
What, is it the same business?
Same business.
Yeah.
Same business. It's already two units that are connected.
So I'm just trying to think how that works. Whether there should be only one sign there, if it's one business, could be a bigger sign.
Should be just one sign because you have them on the same, um, the same facade. Now, what we've done in the past is we have given relief to similar businesses that have requested that. I'll give you the latest one that we gave relief to was, uh, over here at Ryan Family Amusements. Remember when they wanted to put that second one up? They wanted to balance it for aesthetic purposes. I think you have something really similar right here, because I think if we were to deny that, it might make the building look a little odd and plain and not balanced. So it, it, to me, it looks very similar to what we allowed over there. And I do think this is gonna be variance relief too, by the way, not a special permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
This comes under the business centers, that would you put it?
Hmm, well, it might come under business centers, but I'm just saying that the, it's...
I mean, I mean typically if...
One sign on the same side, it's, it's not allowed.
Yeah.
So, but we've done it for Stop and Shop. We did it for Shaw's. Uh, we, we've done it quite a few places around town. It's, it's a fact-specific to the petitioner. I don't think we have a blanket rule, it, it, one size fits all. We have to look at this and, and make a judgment whether it's a reasonable request.
Typically, I would think that, yeah. One, you know, you'd be able to put a sign like between the two units in the middle or between the two units that could be bigger. On the other hand, as was just stated, I think pretty much, I think, uh, it looks better this way because you have the, you know, the doors of each business.
Yeah.
Kind of similar, similarly sized and so forth, all on the front, so I think it, it does make more sense for this to be two signs anyways.
Can be consistent with the rest of the...
Guess that's all I got.
John or Barbara?
I don't have anything.
No agreement.
Okay.
Jay, anything for other than you? What are your thoughts? It make sense?
It does. It makes it kind of balanced throughout the whole, throughout the whole facility, so, you know.
And I think where that's not permitted in the bylaw, that it's, it's better granted as a variance. And I think that if we were to grant the variance, it wouldn't derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. I do think it might represent a hardship to the petitioner. He's not able to advertise over there what he's, cause it, it does kind of look like, even though it's Sinorama, it looks like he's doing things in one side and something different over here.
Yes.
Maybe more retail on the left-hand side versus more business in...
Exactly right.
Okay, to the right-hand side, so, um, I, I do think, uh, you know, that we're on solid ground granting a variance for this, so I don't think it falls under the special permit. So is anybody prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a variance petition five, one, five, oh, as requested.
Okay, and as represented by the, uh, pictures that were submitted by the petitioner?
That would be correct.
Okay, so we'll enter that as an exhibit just to show what you're gonna put there. Okay, we have a second to that motion?
Well, second.
Second, okay. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. You've also asked for special permit, uh, relief. We would ask that you request to withdraw that without prejudice. You don't need it. You can come back anytime if you think you need a special permit.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a request to withdraw without prejudice. We request for special permit. We have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
But, uh, double mo, we got double motion makers over here. Okay, Jay's, uh, Jay's relinquished to the second spot on that. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That's granted. So there's a twenty-day appeal period after the decision is clocked in with the town clerk. After that twenty days elapses, come over and see our administrative assistant, Dolores, who'll give you the special permit. Take it over to the Registry of Deeds and just record it and bring a copy back to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, boy.
Have a nice holiday.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Before we adjourn tonight, I would like to, uh, recognize our friend, fellow board member and chairman, Steve DeYoung. As we're all aware, Steve has recently suspended his resignation to the board, uh, due to some personal health reasons. Of course, we're all gonna miss him, okay? And, uh, I do want to thank him for his many years of service on this board, as well as other boards in town. And we only wish him the best health-wise.
Definitely, yeah.
We hope if he's, uh, in the neighborhood from time to time, that he'll come in and stop and see us. And, uh, if we are, uh, having any type of a social get-together that we do have from time to time, that, uh, he will certainly come and join us. And, uh, if he does, uh, and if he's listening, uh, I'll be picking up the tab. You don't have to put down that American Express card that you used to so, uh, you used to so do, um, but no.
We're gonna afford that.
Yeah, um, so again, thank you, Steve, for all of your service, and I know the people from the town appreciate it.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Okay. If there's nothing else, uh...
Make a motion to approve the minutes for October, November fourteen?
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Those the only minutes?
Those are the only minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No one's opposed? Adjourn, okay, well, there you go.